Call this meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the very bottom of the rich existence, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silent prayer for our servicemen and women throughout the world and also for all of those who have passed away in our community. Roll call please.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Mr. Donahue?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Mr. Gahan?
Here.
Mr. Rogan?
I make a motion to correct a typographical error as found within the summary title of item 5(c). Insert the word twenty between hundred and thousand to correct the omission of the word twenty for it is to read two-hundred-and-twenty-thousand-nine-hundred-and-six dollars.
Second. There's a motion on the floor and a second on the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and so will. Please dispense with the reading of the minutes.
Third order, 3a Tax Assessors Results Report, for hearing date held May 16, 2018.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
3b Tax Assessors Reports, for hearing dates to be held June 6, 2018, and June 13, 2018.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
3c Minutes of the Solid Waste Advisory Committee Meetings, held November 28, 2017, January 30, 2018, and February 27, 2018.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
3d Single Tax Office City Funds Distributed Comparison Report, 2017-2018, year-to-date May 31, 2018.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed. Do any council members have announcements at this time?
Yes, I have one. There'll be a benefit for Gage Lasky at the Kaiser Valley Community Center on Kaiser Avenue in Scranton Friday, June 22 from 2:00 to 10:00 p.m. The admission is $10. There'll be raffles, t-shirts, fifty-fifty drawing, food and beverages, and music by DJ Krypton. Gage Lasky is a 12-year-old Northeast Intermediate School student who needs muscle eye surgery at Will's Eye Institute. He was also diagnosed with autism and seizure disorder, and recently with a congenital brain abnormality. And he also has an inoperable aneurysm in his brain. The proceeds from this benefit will help cover deductible that is not covered by medical insurance and travel expenses for his eye surgery in Philadelphia to repair damage caused by a seizure. For tickets or to make a donation of a gift basket, gift card, food, or monetary contribution, you can contact Joyce Spies at (570) 955-0253, or Amber Lasky at (570) 497-9532. And I would urge everyone to try to make it to this to help this young man out. Thank you.
I have one also. The City's Office of Economic and Community Development will have applications available for the 50-year Action Plan funded through the Community Development Block Program, the Home Investment Partnership Program, and Emergency Solutions Grant, starting next Monday, June 11. This action plan converts the -- covers the period of January 1, 2019, through December 31, 2019. And activities must be consistent with the needs and objectives identified in the City of Scranton's five-year consolidated plan. Eligible applicants must be incorporated for profit, nonprofit, or public organizations or businesses able to undertake their approved activity within the City of Scranton. Applicants must also demonstrate the financial management expertise to successfully develop, design, and implement and monitor the proposed activity, and all applicants must meet any other federal requirements. The City is estimating 2019 allocations to total 2.6 million in community development block grants, 500,000 in the home program, and 220,000 in emergency solutions grants. Applications will be available on the City's website, and applications must be submitted by mail or hand-delivered to the OECD office on the first floor of City Hall no later than 3:00 p.m. on Friday, August 3. Thank you.
I have one. The annual Scranton Shakespeare Festival will begin on June 28 and run through July 29. Some of the shows will be How to Succeed in Business Without Really Trying, The Tempest as You Like It, Hansel and Gretel, and Footloose, and all tickets are completely free. The first one, How to Succeed in Business Without Really Trying, is going to be scheduled for the marketplace at Steamtown, so that may be an interesting one to catch if you're available. And that's all I have.
Anyone else? According to PennDOT press release, the demolition of the old Harrison Avenue Bridge is set for tomorrow. On Tuesday, June 5, at approximately 11:00 a.m., a PennDOT contractor will use a controlled demolition to remove the last remaining span of the old Harrison Avenue Bridge. Traffic on the Central Scranton Expressway will be stopped from 10:45 a.m. until shortly after 11:00, and then the all-clear has been given. The new Harrison Avenue Bridge will also be closed at 10:45 and will remain closed for a longer period of time throughout the morning while inspectors evaluate the impact of the blast on the new bridge. From approximately 10:00 a.m. until the all-clear is given, a 1,000-foot safety perimeter will be established around the bridge. During this time, no one will be permitted to be within the safety perimeter unless they are inside a building. Once the bridge has been detonated, the contractor will begin to work around the clock for five days to clear all the debris from the gorge. And secondly, next Monday, June 11, there will be a public caucus with NDC to discuss parking. It will be held in council chambers at 5:15 p.m.
Fourth order, citizens' participation.
Our first speaker tonight is Giovanni Piccolino.
Good evening, gentlemen. Just two really quick things. The vacant parking lot to the left of our pizza shop, Awana's, when you are walking out the door, is that officially the city's or is that still the developers from the whatever, 500 Renaissance?
I thought it was still developers, but I know that the SRA is involved with that too. We can check with the SRA and see what the status is.
Okay. Well, regardless of who it is, it's filthy. It hasn't even been weed-whacked or anything. The amount of people that come to our place and like, "That's disgusting next door to you." I mean, it's right in the middle of the city. Should be cleaned up or, you know, given to someone that could do something with it like us, purchase it or something. Also, I'm not sure who gives people the permission or the permit for shutting down Bogart Court on First Fridays. I mean, for like the -- maybe if it was like Hundred Deep or a bunch of people back there, but for like the 10, 15 people that are back there that close off the alley so like my drivers can't go through, our employees, it's a real headache for our business and our customers who can't park that like kind of want to cruise around back, throw their fourways on and run up and grab a pizza. They can't even do that. So, I'm all for good things, but I'm also for not being detrimental to our business. Can't they move this little party in Bogart Court to say, you know, that beautiful new park that they supposedly opened up above them, maybe actually put it to use? Or the big empty space, the Renaissance on Lockawana Avenue, that big vacant space there so Bogart Court could stay open on First Fridays? So, I don't keep hearing our customers be like, "I drove around the block 19 times. This sucks, this sucks, this sucks," like constantly. You know? There's got to be some other way to do it than to block it off and not allow us back there. It's very, very annoying, and I feel that they're getting precedence over us for they didn't even ask or nothing, they just block it off and that's it. So, in order for us to get through, we either got to stop traffic and move the barrier and then get in an argument with the people, or go down the do-not-enter way. I don't really think that's fair. Been in business for a very, very long time there, and I'm pretty sure we generate a lot more income and taxes for the city than they do in this little time. Again, I'm all for it, but not for it to be detrimental to me while a few people are in the back alley, you know, throwing their little party. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joan Hodewanitz, city resident and taxpayer. I want to start out by thanking everybody in the city, you, Wayne, also since I saw you there, who came and supported Swinging on Vine on May 25. We had a beautiful night, raised a lot of money for the library. I especially want to thank Mayor Courtright. He comes every year, and he's very gracious about supporting the library's Michigan's fundraising efforts. So, thank you, everybody who was involved in that. Also, tomorrow, June 5 through June 10, is our next Friends of the Scranton Public Library Book Sale. Marketplace at Steamtown, second floor, right in front of the gym, that open area. We have fiction, we have nonfiction, we have adult books, we have young adult, we have children's books. Hardcover, softcover, we have DVDs, we have music CDs, and we have audio books falling all over the place. And we charge one or $2 for most of these items. Some of the children's books are very small, we might only charge 25 cents. So, it's a good deal. I'll leave you copies. We have adjusted the hours because the mall is closing a little earlier these days, so if you have a chance, please come. You're going to find some great bargains. Speaking of the mayor, when last we met on May 21, I know I don't often pay attention, but did anyone mention that on May 25 was going to be the mayor's State of the City address? Because I totally missed any warning of that coming up.
We were notified by email two days prior to that, and I did send an email back to the mayor saying that I was not happy that, you know, city council was only given two days' notice. I didn't think that was appropriate. We should have been given that far in advance.
I didn't see it in the paper. I've been somewhat distracted, but I don't recall seeing anything in the paper saying it was coming. I saw the article afterwards. My only comment is, you know, I understand, you know, that the mayor, you know, decides when and where that's going to be held, and doing it in front of the Chamber of Commerce has been the way it's been done the last several years, and that's a friendly audience for him. But I would like to see him delivered here in council chambers where it can be broadcast by ECTV to all the citizens of the city, because we are all stakeholders in the city. Those of us who pay taxes, those of us who live here, those of us who work here, I would like to see that. I know it's his decision, but maybe you can whisper in his ear next year. If nothing else, get it publicized here and in the paper so residents who would like to attend can be there. That would be nice. Let's see, next. We're in the summer months. May 31 has come and gone, so how are we doing on the city's audit? Anybody, if you could maybe tell us some fifth motions or whatever, if you have any status, because I'll be interested. And the other thing I'm interested in, you know, it's what, about a year and a half now or whatever? I don't know, half a year? Whatever happened to the Arcadis study on the stormwater? Are we going to get any kind of feedback on that before your August recess? I would love to see something.
I hope so. The last I heard was they were trying to digitize the impervious lots across the city, and that's where it was stuck, so hopefully.
Okay. Because we're heading into the rainy season, which, you know, makes that an issue. And once you come back from your August recess, it's budget time, and you should have the answers on the audit and the stormwater study for the 2019 budget, I would assume. So, anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Evening, Council. Wes Spinmore, city resident, homeowner, taxpayer. Finally, last week, the street sweeper went through Tripp Park, even though it was two weeks late. But it would have been nice if they let people know when they were coming around. They were supposed to come two weeks before, and they didn't. So, they missed half of the places because nobody moved their cars. It's ridiculous. If they're going to come around, they should let people know. They should make an announcement somehow on TV or post it on the streets, they're going to do. But it was just a waste of time for it to come around because they missed half of the areas. And while I'm on DPW, today was our garbage and recycle day where I live. So, before I went to work, I looked out the window and a recycle truck was coming by. Guy picks up a can for me, and my daughter lives next door to me. Threw my can and everything with the recyclers into the packmaster, and it took off. Now I don't have a recycle container. There were some cracks in it, maybe thought it wasn't good, but it was still good. I used it. They weren't falling out. That's ridiculous what he did.
Mr. Spinmore, if you could leave your address, we'll make sure. Normally, the city does not deliver these bins, but in this situation, you shouldn't have to go down to DPW.
And the reason it was cracked, they don't care. They just throw the stuff in the packmaster and throw the can. They don't care if it lands in the middle of the street or whatever.
We'll make sure one gets delivered to you.
All right, thank you. Okay. Onto Dave Bolzoni, Councilman Gahn. You voted against Dave Bolzoni getting a waiver. Where were you when George Parker worked in this city but didn't live here? How come you weren't here complaining about that?
I think I was in college back then. So, I'd...
Well, the precedent was set, so you people have no choice but to vote for the waiver for Dave Bolzoni.
I would have voted against him too for the same reason.
Next thing. I don't know if any of you watched the news, but on Thursday, May 24, in Altoona, Pennsylvania, a pit bull mauled a six-year-old boy to death. I don't know how many more examples I have to bring to you people to get something done. Councilman Gahn, you have two young children. What if that six-year-old was one of your children? It's just heartbreaking. If any of you have a heart, you'll do something about this. It's ridiculous. I don't know how many more times I have to bring this up. A six-year-old boy killed by a pit bull, and that's one of many, many examples that I've come forward here. It's just ridiculous. It's just a matter of time before it happens here. Something's got to be done. And Councilman Evans, you said you were going to meet the mayor on this issue, have you?
I haven't talked specifically about that, but my position is if they send legislation, then we'll vote on it. So, I'm waiting for legislation from the administration, and we'll vote on it.
Well, if nobody brings it up to the mayor, he's not going to do anything.
Well, then I'll bring it up to him again.
Well, I hope so. This is just terrible. My heart breaks for that family that lost their six-year-old child. It's terrible. Okay, lastly, the hole on Dorothy Street on the ball field, I brought up, another one opened up, and I said DPW was horses there. But did anybody look into that since I was here last? Because it's going under the sidewalk. The soil under the sidewalk is eroding. That sidewalk is going to collapse. It's half of the dirt under the sidewalk. You can see right under the sidewalk. Half the dirt is eroded away, and it continues to. Something's got to be done.
Mrs. Reed, if we could please send a memo to DPW? I believe this is the same hole that Councilman Perry had fixed a couple of years ago when it reopened?
No, it's -- this is on the other side of the sidewalk.
Okay.
A new hole opened up. The other one that was filled is okay.
Okay.
But I think there's a bigger issue there.
That's what it sounds like. If we could please send something to DPW on that?
And they're aware of it, like I said, there's city horses blocking it off.
Because I remember the previous issue, that was about a year or so ago, right, Tim?
Yeah. Like I said, yeah. Even though there's horses there, if somebody could be walking on it and still, that sidewalk God forbid what could happen. All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Marge Kravitz, taxpayer. Why are you eliminating the 2.4% wage tax for Mr. Bolzoni, which was always included in the resident waiver? If you are eliminating this, and he is making often the minimum wage in the City of Scranton, how is it fair for the ordinary workers making 20,000, 30,000 per year, who are required to pay the 3.4%? My niece and nephew, who worked retail, minimum wage jobs, went in school, and they had to pay this tax. 3.4% of $90,000 salary would go further than 3.4% on a $20,000 salary or less. As a business administration strater, he should know this. This should be put on the ballot, and you should let the people, the ones who are paying his salary, decide this. Would you be okay with this, Mr. Perry?
No, I don't believe that's even up to me to put that to a referendum.
Mr. Donahue?
Again, we're not going to poll the council. If council members choose to engage, they can, but we're not going to go through this every week polling all five members.
Well, you know, you don't abide by your rules either, so... Mr. Donahue?
I'm going to be voting against both resolutions.
Mr. Evans?
No, I think that'd be a little cumbersome to do a referendum. It's a lot involved in that, and I'm actually in favor of the waiver anyway.
You will let the people vote on it, okay? Mr. Gahan, would you let the people vote on it?
No, only because, you know, if we were going to put something like that on the ballot, then there would be no need for the five of us or anybody in government, because that is a direct democracy where everyone votes on everything. I have said before that I think this is an issue of fairness, and Mr. Bolzoni should live in the city if he's going to work in the city. So, I don't think a matter like that should go on the ballot for people to vote for. I don't, I don't think that's right.
Was this job advertised in the paper?
No.
No? Sorry, wasn't advertised. Okay, this mayor will not be paying a wage tax that he could potentially decide what it will be. There will be no harm on him if he decides to raise the taxes. He will not have to suffer the high taxes that we have to pay. How is it, how is an indefinite waiver even something that we can talk about right now? If you're going to tax some of us, you have to tax all of us. If Mr. Bolzoni is the best of the best, let's consider some items that passed under his reign. First, the Scranton Sewer Authority deal, which was riddled with problems, potentially illegal ones. Second, the increase of the garbage tax, which is currently being challenged by many citizens in court, and can likely produce a massive refund to the citizens of Scranton. How do the best of the best use garbage fees money to pay non-garbage bills with, and not realizing this was wrong? Did you realize it was wrong? Anybody?
Just one point of clarification. Mr. Bolzoni was not the business administrator when the garbage fee was increased.
He wasn't?
He was not.
Perhaps he is not the best of the best. Should he have not known this? Perhaps the fact that he is the best of the best is coming from Mr. Courtright, which is friends of Bolzoni, and not some actual facts. If Mr. Bolzoni believes in Scranton and is willing to collect the $90,000 salary from a potential distressed city, then surely he'd be willing to take another, a lower salary and/or pay his share of taxes. Election is coming up for two council members, Perry and Evans. Scrantonians, we need a change to make Scranton great again. We don't need a yes man for the mayor, for the mayor. We need a yes man for the people of Scranton to be up for us. And you're laughing, Mr. Rogan.
I'm not laughing. I'm looking out at my papers, but your time is up. Thank you.
Well, I saw you laughing. And last week, Mr. Rogan, one more thing?
Your time is up.
Last week, Mr. Rogan?
Ma'am, your time is up.
One more thing?
No, your time is up.
You said it was...
You're out of order.
You said it was unfair for Mr. Bolzoni to live in Claxton and not...
Your time is up.
So, how could you vote on it when you said it was unfair?
Your time is up. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Norma Jeffries, Scranton resident, and I've got a folder, and I did practice in front of my mirror for five minutes, so I hope I'm within the limit.
We allow an extra 30 seconds or so, but not an extra minute.
So, I hope I'm within the limit. But my subject tonight is the Naught Park and the Treehouse. I had started to gather a little folder on different articles that were in the paper regarding the Treehouse, and then when Joan mentioned about the meeting that was that the mayor had, and it was in the Saturday paper, and that's when I heard about it, and it says, "Mayor delivers optimistic State of the City address." Address, okay? So, that was what was in the paper, and I like Joan, had I known, I would have been there at the meeting, but I didn't know. So, what he said in this article, glasses on, is the city also secured funding to repair the popular David Wensel Treehouse at Naught Park, though it's unclear when that will happen, Courtright said. I said, huh, that was Saturday, May 26. So, I went back to my little folder, and I had an article in here, quite an extensive article, on the Treehouse, and it says, "City branched out to find funds to fix Naught Park Treehouse." I said, okay. So, the mayor found some money. That was Monday, April 23. So, within six weeks, just about, some money was found, but he doesn't know when it's going to be used. So, it also perked my interest. I said, what is the Treehouse? So, good old Google, you know, you can do all kinds of things Googling. So, I did Google Treehouses in America. There's 15 most amazing treehouses in America, and Scranton is number eight. Now, I thought, number eight? Wow. I said, that's really neat. Out of 15, there are going to be people planning to come to Scranton to see this Treehouse, and, you know, they're going to come. My husband was an amusement park person, and he would plan, 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 our vacation to go to amusement parks. So, there might be somebody out there who's planning a vacation to come and see this Treehouse. Boy, are they going to be disappointed when they see that. So, that was one investigation I did. And then I thought, I did not know who David Wensel was. Why was it named after him? So, I Googled that, and that was the most enlightening. I'll tell you, I didn't know that. I wasn't in the city then. I've only been here not quite three years, so I didn't know who David Wensel was. So, I do stand here tonight to thank Mr. Wensel for his service to the country and to other Vietnam War veterans as well. There's eight pages of terrific information in here. My poor printer's going to wear out. But one of the things too that I thought was so great is that he was educated here in the city. He earned his bachelor's and master's degree at the University of Scranton. He was the former mayor of Scranton. He was a former city tax collector, and he served the city from 1986 to 1990 for many years. And he also taught the Vietnam Experience. And in his military career, he was awarded so many medals. And so, I thought, I said, wow, this man has done so much for our country, and then he has also come here to Scranton, back to his home, and served his city, and that's the best we can do for him? Is to have a dilapidated Treehouse in his name. I'm sure we in Scranton can do more than that. Some of my paperwork... Some of my paperwork here, I did find that they're looking at some, I think it's a hundred and twenty thousand dollars that's needed to repair the treehouse. And I'm thinking, I said, boy, just think if we, as citizens, each of us sent ten dollars, fifteen dollars, twenty-five dollars to the mayor, certainly we could, as a community, can get that together. Not only that it's an eyesore, but also to honor David Wenzel, who gave so much to the country, you know, and talked about how his dad drove him back and forth the Valley Forge to get him adjusted to his injuries. You just can't just let it go to wayside. I don't know if he's still in the city. I don't know him, but it was, I feel like I know him now since I read these eight pages of information. And I have to thank the Scranton Times, because that's who wrote it, Josh McGallop, and, you know, I just feel that we, as citizens, need to do more than just that, and to just continue and let it fall apart. So again, I'm going to thank David Wenzel for his service, and anyone that's out there, please let them know that Norma Jeffries is so impressed with reading the article, and that the Scranton Times took the time to put this article together so that people like me can go back and Google it and find out about it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and two, two points. Two, two points to bring up. I did speak with the mayor regarding the treehouse. I know there are plans in motion to, to fix up that treehouse, but your, your points are exactly right, that Mayor Wenzel is a patriot. He was a great mayor, a great American, and he does still live here in the city, and we're fortunate enough to, to see him out at community events throughout the year all the time, and he always has a smile on his face and, and great advice for us as, as members of the council. He truly is a great, great Scrantonian and an all-around great person, so, thank you.
I'll go for him then, because I go to different things. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Bob Bowles?
Evening, Council. Bob Bowles, Scranton. That was a tough act to follow, but she's a hundred percent right. If anybody deserves respect in this town, it's David Wenzel. He gave it all, and I think we need to step up to the plate and do what's right. We pushed the peas around the plate too long, and you should be applauded for what you did. Thank you. On seven A and B of Bolzoni, I'm adamantly opposed to changing our rules, our laws, the laws, the laws, and it's for everyone, our fire, our DPW, our police, and our employees in the city. But it seems there's an exception made for the golden boy. What is he? He's just a common banker. He left here because he thought the grass was greener somewhere else. What did he do? He helped screw up the sewer authority, the stormwater plan. What has he really done? What's the accolade here that we should sit here and honor him while we're putting the screws of every citizen in the city of Scranton, get raped with the taxes that we have to pay, and give him a concession? I think it's adamantly despicable to even think that we're going to allow this to happen. If you're going to do it for him, then give it to everyone else. Don't force anybody else into this city, into the sewer we're going in, into the tax hole that we're buried in, and you want to give a break. If you want to do anything commendable for the taxpayers in the city instead of giving a free ride, go after the mall. Mr. Gahan, send a letter. You love sending letters. Send a letter asking that the mall be reassessed to its fair market value. Not that he's giving something to the school board here, buying us off. Pay your fair taxes. Send a letter asking that all the Koz's and nonprofits pay one percent of their gross in a fee, just like you did with the garbage fee. It's not a tax, it's a fee. You want to pull the city out of the hole, then do what's right by the people in the city. But don't tell us that we have to live in a city that's going into mine, so to speak. With Tax Stat, the school district, I haven't seen anybody challenge the school district. Haven't seen a famous letter, a phantom letter, go to them challenging what's going on. I haven't seen a letter from here, and if you would, Mr. Gahan, last time you didn't want to talk, but would you support a letter supporting the sewer authority, going after Mulligan for our money? Would you do that? Would you make a motion tonight on behalf of the people of the city of Scranton? You want to sit here tonight? Yeah, you could say, I don't want Bolzoni here. It's a good political ploy, because you know the other four characters are going to vote him in. It's not going to get you any accolades, not from me, anyway. Okay? The bottom line is, if you're going to be transparent in this city, let's be transparent. But let's be fair to everybody in this city. Bolzoni's no master. He's no genius. He's no Houdini. He hasn't proven to us that we're debt-free in the city of Scranton. He came here because he looked for another free ride. Let him stay in banking, where the big walls protect him. He's not here protecting us. If you're going to do anything for this city, let's do something for the city. Support the sewer authority, get money back. Go after the nonprofits, get money back. But don't embarrass the people and humiliate us one day more by a Bolzoni or anybody else who doesn't want to live in this damn city and live the way we have to live and pay the debt we have to pay to the school board and everyone else. If they want accountability and they want to live here, then pay to the piper or stay the hell out of here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bowles. Lee Morgan?
Good evening, Council. The first thing I have here is, you know, before the meeting, people were discussing the issue of Mr. Bolzoni, and, you know, they, they were of the opinion that, Mr. Rogan, you thought that it wasn't fair that he wasn't going to come in here and pay his fair share in taxes like everybody else. I don't know if that's true or not, but that was the discussion that took place here today prior to the meeting. But I did go and look at the amount of litigation that the city is spinning at this time. Went there today, I think. Two hundred and forty pages of docket entries in litigation by the city. That's what the clerk said. It's, I've got a web address that I can go to and pull them up. I want some more information on what's going to take place with the Scranton Sewer Authority, and it's my hope that the person suing the city is asking the court to reverse the sale, because it's going to be the most beautiful thing that ever happened to this city if that happens. The other thing, the doughboy that the newspaper talked about today, doesn't belong to a veterans' group, belongs to all the residents of the city, and it's my humble opinion, it doesn't belong at Steamtown. It belongs outside in the public eye. It needs to be moved up to the corner of Harrison and Music Street. All right? On the right side of the road, there's a little space there, like a little park. It needs to be returned back someplace so that every resident in this city can drive by it and see it publicly, because it belongs to the people in the city. And we've got to stop taking monuments down and moving them. And everybody who served in the First World War is dead, but when you read the history of that war and how the average lifespan of a machine gunner might be thirty seconds, I think it starts to give you the idea that, you know, when they sent out five or eight dispatchers to take a message so that one had got through, the kind of carnage that those people lived through. And I think it's important for people to remember that. And the other thing I have here today is, there needs to be another home rule study group brought together in this city. It's my humble opinion that this group needs to organize itself, get it on the ballot so that it can function, and we need to change city government. We need to abolish the council and go with a nine-member, non-paid citizens' group that will sit and vote on certain issues in the city. The other thing we need to do is, we need to abolish the office of the mayor, and we need to hire a city manager. It's my opinion that we need to start getting our mind around the nonprofits that allegedly have thirty-five percent of our tax base. And, you know, there's been discussions here about Mr. Bolzoni tonight. I think that after these rulings come down, I think that Judge Gibbons had some stuff sent back to him from High Court, and I think he understands that the court's not going to tolerate his silliness, and that his rulings are going to be examined by a High Court that understands the kind of silliness that's taken place in Lackawanna County Court for a long time. And it's my opinion in the future that if the sale of this authority has been challenged in court and it's moving, it's over. It's going to be reversed. And the residents of this city? I don't know how this council can sit the way it does and give the whole rate that they've gave to Pennsylvania American Water, even though it was a combined system, and some of it belonged to the stormwater system. And evidently, the council really didn't care very much about what they were doing and the harm they were doing to the residents of this city. And the funding of nonprofits by this government is ridiculous, just utterly ridiculous, because they offer nothing to residents of this city. Take a look at the North Scram Project and how much private money actually went there. And a former council president was very proud to hand them, I think it was thirty rental vouchers, just public money. Because, you know something? It's just amazing that now we're going to have a nonprofit involved in the renaissance of the downtown. My point is, what do we hire our elected government for? Thank you.
Thank you. Ron Omen?
The reason there's no money for the treehouse is because it's not downtown, period. People, another of this council's asinine decisions against the taxpayers keep is no surprise to me. If this mayor is so grossly incompetent that he can't assume his responsibilities in running this city without these two hacks, what do we need him for? That's a question. I have to put it in writing to get it? These two people haven't done a thing positive for one single taxpayer of this city. Nothing, nada, the big bagel. You know, this place isn't a democracy no more. It's a dictatorship. We've got the inmates running the asylum. The city is just going to pot. You know, they don't even sell dog licenses. I go to the park, I'm the only dog I see up there with, I mean, the only person with a dog license. There's no enforcement. You can't walk down sidewalks. Cars are parked on them because people are renting rooms out to try to get by, to save their property. North Scranton has become, it's become a bad place. Neighborhood just looks terrible compared to a few years ago. I've got a man dismantling cars for extra money a block from my house, like a junkyard. Nothing done about it. You know, I have to read about Charles Jefferson. You make him like a hero. Charles Jefferson's nothing but a lousy, stinking deadbeat. You're giving him two hundred, two billion and eight hundred thousand dollar grant for two forty-six Mulberry. It's in the paper. You know, two forty-six Mulberry owes a hundred and two, a hundred and five thousand dollars. The paper's full of these same people. There's about a hundred names that are there year after year after year. Not a, there's a hundred properties, year after year. You don't do one thing to help the taxpayers. You don't do one thing to collect a dime from the same people. All we see is a big list of brag about people that have lost their homes, how much they got, the city got off of them. Why is it this two forty-six Mulberry is sold? This is two thousand and fifteen. He owes us money as of today. The whole place is full of a bunch of deadbeats, and all you're interested in is giving them gra, is grants downtown, give them loan forgiveness. It's got to stop. What, the mayor brags about businesses, they're not paying any taxes. They're all Koz or... We need money. That's why you want a reassessment so bad. That's not the way to get it. The way to get it is go over these hundred-something people and make them pay or sell their property instead of taking it away from somebody that owes eight hundred, a thousand dollars on a house. It's ridiculous what they owe. I won't go into all the money, but you've got Wyoming and Spruce, it's been there for years, great big sum of money. Two forty-five Wyoming, the same thing. Every year, it's in the paper for huge amounts of money. At D and D Construction, there's an article in the paper, they spent fifteen million downtown, the article said. They owe all over the place. They owe, they don't pay taxes. They collect rents, they don't pay taxes. It's just, you, you just, you people just have turned your backs on the people that put their trust in you. You know? It's no secret, I don't like any of these people. I might not know it all, but I know what's important. I can see the city going to pot because of no leadership whatsoever. I see my neighborhood going downhill, terrible, terrible. Nobody cares. I've made complaints. I listen to people out here make complaints, week after week, that it goes nowhere with you, unless something is downtown is said adverse, and that's taken care of immediately. You can't get downtown fast enough to pour some money into whatever they need. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council?
Good evening, Council. Dave Dobson, resident, taxpayer. Okay. I'm going to pick, be a little nicer about picking on your pat. I disagree with you on one thing, what issues of improper pay. We have improperly awarded pensions. We have improperly awarded insurance to Mr., our last mayor candidate. And what I think is that it's time that we hold the principals that made these decisions and handed this stuff out into account. That's all. It's, it's like my employer, if he says he's going to pay me fifteen dollars an hour from ten dollars an hour, and then two years later, he comes back, jeez, what was I thinking? You weren't worth that, you know? No, it's the people that are making the decisions. We still have people on that pension board that were responsible for those double pensions, and they get reelected. The one person is elected, year in, year out, they're put back in. So it's, it's a case of sometimes the voters not wanting to be responsible for their own vote and their own niativity. I had that at Christmas time. Somebody was all fired up about, or was it Thanksgiving, maybe? The senators that were involved with harassing the ladies and stuff, and it's like, look, you're responsible for, they shouldn't have to pay for it, and they may not be able to pay for it. So if somebody was harassed ridic, to a ridiculous extent, then, to me, the government has to pay. pay the compensation for it and that's all there is to it. We have to swallow that and move on, but make sure it never happens again. And some people don't deserve another term in office over it. Bogart Place popped into my mind. We have an empty parking lot or an empty lot there on the corner that nothing's been done, nothing's been shoveled for years. How about if we turn it into a parking lot for people up and down that way? Because I parked there when I went to Bonna Pizza once or twice and you probably couldn't do that after a twenty-inch snowstorm. But it would be interesting to, because you know, who wants to pay three or four bucks just to run across the street, pick up a pizza and take it home? You know, that's craziness. So you're actually hurting the man's business. And once again, Crown Avenue was recently paved and guess what? Two hundred block, the beginning of the two hundred block, there's another repair. And it's like, ouch, but yeah, it's kind of okay. The three hundred block is a crime. The beginning of the three hundred block is a crime. The person or the company that performed that repair should be banned from conducting any construction work in Scranton. That's what they deserve. If they don't come back and fix that thing right. Now, on five F, I'd like a little explanation on that further. It was mentioned before. Seven B. You know, it's typically a policy where people work in two states and live in another state for them to pay whatever their home state doesn't tax them for. People that live in, work in New York and live in Scranton or in Pennsylvania might pay half of the Pennsylvania tax because the New York taxes are high or whatever. Now, I understand it's Newton Township. Well, we could possibly deduct, in the interest of fairness, Newton Township's obligation from the two and a half percent or whatever, or 3.2 percent. And consider it from there because this way, if the guy has to pay both, he's not only paying for Newton, he's paying for Scranton. That's more like probably five percent. And, okay, in the past couple of weeks, we had a lot of hoopla about cannabis and medical cannabis and so forth. The only recommendation I would have on that further is it's time to start asking, instead of just law enforcement authorities and people that might be concerned with keeping things as they are, ask the Civil Liberties Union, ask some of the people on the other side of the fence and get a broader, broader description. Because the last president just asked the enforcement arm. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
For the last several weeks, I've been hitting on the HUB test, something that this council could do and apparently doesn't do, doesn't want to do it. But I got to tell you, you know, the things you stumble upon, I just couldn't believe it. I, I found out, and if you look at the Tax Assessor's webpage, parking in Scranton. A certain individual who bought the Electric City Parking Garage that needed immediate, immediate, that was the thing that was, the word that was used, the adjective. And how many years has it been? Three years. And things are going on in all of the other formerly owned by the city garages. And nothing's going there, but yet it was so dilapidated that, you know, the mayor would have had to tear it down. Well, guess what? In addition to giving him that garage for $1, it's also tax exempt. Now, I mean, where does this end? They don't have to pay property tax roughly for, now that's been three and a half years. And no property tax? It's right here if you'd like to see it. It says Electric City Parking exempt. Yet the other, I checked the other ones that I knew, the other parking garages that I know of are parking period. Penn Avenue Parking in the three hundred block, they pay taxes. The parking at, in the two hundred block of Wyoming Avenue, they pay taxes. The parking at the corner of Franklin and Linden, owned by A and F Parking, they pay taxes. The parking at Mulberry Street, Adams and Vine, they pay taxes. What is the difference between those people and another private owner who owns the Electric City Parking Garage? Because he bought it for, from this city for $1. And we were told it was in terrible shape. And we now, I mean, we know since subsequently Andy Spaglia tried to tell you people before you voted on it, that half of that was built in 1993 as part of steam town and it's in great condition. And even the other, it's still being used. And where were those immediate repairs that it needed? And why are they exempt from taxes? Do you know how much that is assessed at?
What?
$503,150 total. The land value is $53,150 and the improvement value is $450,000. Now roughly for this year, I did, I don't know, probably about sixty-five grand. And that's only one of the three and a half years. Look at that money. I mean, and then the man goes to the Scranton School District and offers them a deal? If he paid his taxes, just the school taxes, they could probably afford it. I mean, where does this end? And when are you going to look over all of those taxes and properties? I mean, granted, a lot of them are municipal buildings and county buildings, but how in the world? Who can tell me why that property is exempt?
I can't. I'll have to look into it because I don't think it should be as well. I think it should be taxable. If he, if a private owner owns that building, it should be taxable. Now, I don't know if there's anything written to the contract or the contrary, but I do know that in the assessor's office, when a property comes, gets transferred like that, generally they leave it as tax exempt until it's, you know, I have no idea.
But you know, that's, you people have that ability.
I know we do.
I mean, every time these, I mean, there aren't that many properties that change hands in Scranton. You could look at them. You could have, I mean, I'm sure Laurie would find time to give it to one of the staff members that when one, when a property's changed, you look at it and you can challenge it.
Well, I'm not sure if we can challenge that from city council's perspective.
Well, the city, the city can. You could bring it to the mayor's attention.
Well, the city should actually be at every hearing, to be perfectly honest with you. They should be at every hearing board meeting. There should be.
This is crazy. Well, you need to go over that whole list and the best way to do it is with the HUB test. And Mr. Rogan, quickly, when are we going to see your, your proposed changes for the double pension? Pardon?
I'm sorry, the mic was off. Before August.
Thank you.
Sure.
And we do have a framework for the legislation that wants the, that we want to propose. I've been working closely with Attorney Menor on this issue for probably over two years at this point. So it's something a lot of time and effort's gone into. We're going to make sure we get it right.
Okay. Hello, I'm Brian Mattson. I was here two weeks ago. It's in regard to the rental registration process of the city and just trying to figure out how it works because it isn't. As in, do I just ask you questions and you give me answers or how does this work? This is a new forum to me, okay? I'm new at this.
Well, the rental registration is run by the License and Permits Department, so...
Now, when the people do not register, who goes after all those people?
That's their responsibility, license and inspections.
And do they have somebody on staff that actually does that?
They have staff members that are in charge of that program. Now, if they're actually going out physically and doing that, I'm not sure, but it's been a failed program from the very beginning, so I'm not going to dispute that. So we're trying, we're trying to do our best to get, get it straightened out. We've done that for quite a while. We've rewritten the ordinance to give it more teeth, to allow for certain things that weren't in it before, but at the end of the day, it's their responsibility.
So basically, no one's doing anything?
Well, they're certainly running the program and they're, they're trying to, we're trying to increase how many people are registered. I know there's a, we did an RFP a couple of years ago to get a separate company in here to try to find out more properties. And we have some success with that, but we're actually going to try to have a caucus with that company in the next few weeks hopefully and find out where they're at.
Yeah. Now, I guess also with checking who's doing it and who's enforcing the code and stuff like that, I, I just can't figure out if the people do not have a sticker, because apparently there's stickers that are given out.
Yeah, the rationale for the stickers are, once you're registered, you put a sticker on a prominent place of the building and then that allows the inspectors to go down the street and see multifamily units that don't have stickers. So, so that's one way that they can enforce the ordinance as well.
Does anybody know how many stickers have been sold possibly this year?
Well, when you register your property, you get a sticker when you register the property.
Do we know how many people registered their properties this year?
Not so, it's an ongoing process, but we could certainly find out how many they have registered so far.
My whole thing with it is, it's definitely a quality of life thing for the, for the victims, for the city. I mean, these people definitely plague our city with some terrible things. They're not paying taxes. We hear this from everybody out there. You guys want to collect taxes? You don't want to raise taxes. It seems like there's an incredible amount of money there. Would it solve all your problems? No, it wouldn't solve all your problems. Would it solve the quality of life? It would help. Would that help? More people want to come to Scranton? Yes. Would those people maybe go to Penn Avenue to those new places and buy something? Yes. I just can't figure out why it isn't taking place. I mean, this is a very, I'm a building analyst by trade, okay? When they don't register according to the code, I guess they open themselves up to inspections also. Now, this is a big safety issue right there alone. You people aren't going through doing any inspections on any kind of dwellings that people were in at all.
If you're, if you do not register, you open yourself up for an inspection.
Yes. But we have to get to the people that aren't registered.
I totally agree with you. And that's why we took it upon ourselves to do the third-party RFP to get somebody in here to try to increase the numbers because I think we're probably at twenty-five percent at most of all the rental units in the city of being registered. Which is really a shame because you're right.
That's a real shame.
We're leaving a ton of money on the table. Not only the registration fee, but we're leaving probably a lot of refuse fees on the table as well because they're not getting those. Plus taxes as well, because if you don't register your property, you can't register a rental property if the taxes aren't current.
Yeah.
So all these things play together. There's plenty of teeth in the ordinance. It's just, it's an enforcement issue at this point.
And that's the whole problem, I believe. Now, what are you doing, what's the city doing to help their enforcement? A little thing with it is, I know of one property, multifamily dwelling, more than three families in it. So you have to have a special license to do any mechanical work in there. The guy hires no one with any kind of qualifications. He just lets anybody go and do boilers, plumbing, all that good fun stuff. The property next door, they're working on. I go down to City Hall. I ask for my right to know. I don't get my right to know in time, but I do get it. And they're very nice and I understand that. As I watch, no work order being put on that house now for two weeks. Now there's a dumpster in the driveway. I don't know what the issue is, whether someone just doesn't go there. I have no idea. I'm told I don't have to keep on coming into office. I can just call to check on it. I feel that's a very bad idea, which I'll be back down there tomorrow, just asking them why there still isn't a stop work order put on a, a house that is obviously under construction that hasn't paid any permit fees and are not building the code either. I'll be back next week when I get five more.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council?
Fifth order, five A motions.
Mr. Perry, any motions or comments?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mr. Rogan. Yeah, lots of notes tonight, a lot of good speakers, a lot of good comments. And with being no meeting last Monday, there was a lot going on. First, let's address some things that were talked about tonight. Mr. Piccolino had an issue with First Friday and his alley not having access for customers and his drivers. Mrs. Reed, if we could, let's, let's see if we can put Mr. Piccolino in touch with the leadership at First Friday. I'm not sure if that's something that Mr. Welby would handle as an organizer. I'd be happy to facilitate that meeting between them and see if there's anything we can work out for that, for those hours where First Friday takes place, if there's something we can do to, to help his access to his building. Also, the treehouse is brought up, which again was, was another excellent point, that The city spends, as it's well documented, good money on that treehouse. It is a beautiful project and it's very unfortunate that it went to disrepair. It's named after a great person, great mayor, and it's something that we do need to get back in line as soon as possible. The last I heard was it was an engineering issue. I know Mr. Rogan said he got an update on it, but if we could, Mrs. Reed, could we get council to get a full, a full update on that from Park and Rec Director Mr. Fallon and from Mayor Courtright? And that way we can see where we are in the step of getting our treehouse back to, what was it, number eight? Right, number eight. That's fantastic, right? How about that? I also, and I know this is something near and dear to your heart, as I was driving around some streets that I haven't been to in a while in Scranton, I noticed some new street signs that were put up. So I want to do a follow-up call on where we are with the street sign program because that's been talked about quite a bit. Signs, as of right now, there's been a hundred replaced. And according to the administration, they're, the plan is still to get an RFQ put out to get a full city replacement on all the street signs. So I'll have more to update on that when I get it, but as of right now, it's, it's a hundred that have been replaced, identified as the most needed, and then administration still wants to get the rest of them replaced. I've gotten in recent weeks several complaints and calls on the Novembreno Pool with a stagnant water issue. As you know, the Novembreno Pool has been operational and the Splash Park is, is on deck and in the engineering phase, but to the neighbors in that area, can we get Parks and Rec involved and maybe DPW a copy, a CC on, just to get what can be done to either pump that stagnant water out so it doesn't become an, an issue with, with the mosquitoes and other insects throughout the summertime? And a house, house cleaning detail, there's been a, a big issue with our .gov email address. I haven't gotten an email through that in, in about a week, week and a half. And I apologize if there's anybody that sent me something that I haven't responded to. Until that email is up and working, feel free to contact me through our, our office. Mrs. Reed will make sure I get any phone calls or emails and I'll get back to, to anybody who, who needs either a phone call or an email back to them. I just want to make everybody aware of that in case there was something hanging out there that I, that I don't know. But that's all I have for today. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Donahue, any motions or comments?
Yes, all I have today is just an update and a request I made a few weeks ago on a status update on the property at 500 South Webster Ave that was destroyed by fire. We did receive a emergency declaration from the mayor to immediately tear down the building and I think that has since been completed. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Evans, any motions or comments?
Yes, I do. First of all, last Friday, I attended...
First of all, last Friday, I attended the 125th anniversary celebration of the Scranton Public Library. First of all, I'd like to thank the Board of Trustees for the invitation to this very important event and congratulate Jack Finerty, the entire staff of the library, the board, and all of the volunteers at the library, including Joan Hodawanas, for all that they do and have done for the Scranton Public Library. Particularly, I'd like to recognize the Hankelman family who have been supporters of the library for generations, starting with Bill Hankelman, who served on the Board of Trustees for 42 years, beginning in 1967. And that line of service continues today through the involvement of Bill's son, Jim Hankelman, who is the current president of the Board of Trustees. In the family's honor, the restored Special Events Room has been named the Hankelman Room, a well-deserved honor to this family that has dedicated so much of their time and energy to the Scranton Public Library. Another matter, I'm going to jump ahead a little bit and move into an agenda item as part of my motions, the granting of a residency waiver for Dave Bolzoni. But instead of talking simply about the waiver, I'd like to expand the discussion to the issue of the residency requirement itself. I wonder sometimes, shouldn't the job performance of a cabinet member be more important than where he or she parks their car at night? I'm not sure this is even a policy that hasn't outlived its useful purpose, whatever that might have been at one time. I would rather have a high-performing city government with the very best of the best working as department heads. I would rather have a city that people move to voluntarily because of all that we have to offer, rather than the kind of city where we have to force people to live here because of a job. We talk all the time about government being adverse to change. We talk all the time about the lack of effectiveness and efficiency in government because we don't embrace necessary change. Because as the mantra of the status quo aptly goes, that's the way it's always been. So why would we change? Is the residency requirement for cabinet members just another example of the status quo? In my mind, if there were two equal candidates for the same position with the city, one being a city resident and one outside the city, I would always, and I mean this sincerely, I would always favor the city candidate. But if the candidates weren't equal, if the candidate from outside the city was clearly better, brighter, and more visionary, why would we not choose that candidate? Why would we shortchange our city and our taxpayers by not hiring the very best? Why would we accept average when we can employ excellence? Quite frankly, it still doesn't make any sense to me at all on that issue. This city council has been forward-looking. Granicus, Smart Cities, Idea Sessions, See Click Fix, working to reduce fees, fines, and taxes, and many other initiatives. Yet somehow, here we are, still conflicted over another policy of the past that simply does not allow for the very best leadership we could find. The residency clause for cabinet members is not just about Dave Bolzoni. And yes, he's deserving of the waiver, in my opinion. But I also happen to think the residency clause is poor public policy. I think it's held the city back, in my viewpoint, for generations. I feel that it may be time for the requirement to be fully reviewed for all future hirings of department heads and cabinet members. But finally, I'm thankful for the fact that we are having this conversation. And I fully recognize that I'm not taking the popular position on this issue. But I'm okay with that. But nonetheless, it is a position I believe would be the right thing for the city of Scranton and its future success. That's all I have for now.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Mr. Gawn, any motions or comments?
Yes, just a few. Thank you. The street sweeper is scheduled to be in East Scranton from June 4th to June 8th, Arthur Avenue to Taylor Avenue. And on that subject, a resident brought up tonight about the street sweeper. I did speak to the mayor last week, and the administration is working on additional funding through grants to purchase more street sweepers for the city, which I had mentioned weeks ago. I also think the city needs to make an investment in the street sweeping program for a number of different reasons. One, because it makes the city look cleaner. Residents enjoy when the street sweeper comes through their city and picks up all of the dirt and the grime and everything else. Number two, from a stormwater management perspective, it's extremely important. And I think actually, in the stormwater management agreement that the city will be facing, you know, in the next couple of months, that's going to have to be baked in there, that the city has to sweep the streets and do a good job at it. I also think that, you know, when we get more street sweepers, we can enact a policy where residents know when the street sweeper is coming, and they can move their cars. I don't buy the argument, you know, that the administration has given that it can't be done. It can be done. Other cities do it, smaller than us and larger than us. So I think if we put a program in place, we would be able to follow that. And hopefully, as we get more equipment, we'll be able to do that. The second thing, there's a curb on Collery Avenue in Manuka that I received several calls from residents about. So we did contact the DPW about that, and we were told that that will be taken care of. So I appreciate that. In the caucus tonight, before the regular meeting, we discussed that next week there'll be a meeting with NDC about the parking garages. And there was a discussion in the back on whether or not that this meeting should be televised. And I just want to say publicly that I do think that that meeting should be televised in council chambers because I think it's important. The parking garages, obviously, are important, not only to the people downtown, but to all our city residents. So I do think that, you know, whether or not NDC wants to be on television, that doesn't really matter to me. I think that should be a requirement to come into these chambers and let the people of the city who don't come to the council meetings know exactly what is going on. So if they don't want to be on television, that's too bad for them. This is a public meeting, and the people deserve to see what's going on. Also, I did send a letter April 19th to the Pennsylvania Economy League about an issue I've brought up several times regarding the pensions. I have not received a response. We sent another letter May 17th, and still no answer. So we will send another response. I will reach out to Mr. Cross. You know, I do think in this instance, it's important for the city to hear from our recovery coordinator on these important issues. And I would hate to think that they would shirk their responsibility in answering a councilman, especially on a matter as important as this. And I'll save the rest of my comments for agenda items. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Just two comments. As I mentioned in the caucus, and Councilman Gawn mentioned just now, the city is putting, going to be putting in for grants for numerous pieces of equipment, but specifically a street sweeper through a new clean diesel program through the state of Pennsylvania. So this is definitely a good program that can help the city acquire equipment at little to no cost, and it's more friendly to the environment. So wanted to mention that as well. And also on our agenda tonight is an item to enter into a contract with Riley Associates for engineering services for the city's 2018 roadway improvement project. And the most common question and complaint that we get from residents of Scranton is, "When is my street going to be paved?" Or, "When is the street in my neighborhood going to be paved?" Now, this ordinance does not apply to any of the issues that have been ongoing in South Side and the Hills specifically, where roads have been cut up by utility contractors. Those will be repaved by the utility contractors at their expense. This program, which will be done in conjunction with our OECD and city program, will be paving, again, miles and miles of road throughout the city of Scranton. And over the last five years, the city's probably paved more roads than in the last 20. But there's still a long way to go after decades of neglect on our roadways. And also, the fact is, living in northeastern Pennsylvania, no matter how much money we spend, we're going to have rough winters with lots of freezing and thawing. And that is going to cause, unfortunately, problems on our roadways. But I am glad to announce that we are going to be doing quite a bit more paving this year all throughout the city as well, both through city dollars and federal dollars. And that's something I will continue to support as long as I'm on council. That is all.
I have, I'm sorry, excuse me. I have one additional thing. I apologize if I failed to mention. I brought this up in the caucus, but just for the record, Mrs. Reed, if we could ask the business administrator, there was a transfer of $7,500 from the Workers' Compensation Fund, and it says it's going to HR Personnel Cost Adjustment. And that's within the business administrator's office. So I would like to know what that is exactly for, and I'd like that answered by next week. Thank you.
5B for introduction and ordinance authorizing maintaining of the existing no parking signs along the southerly side of River Street from South Washington Avenue to Mattis Avenue. Installation of R-7-302 No Parking Symbol Arrow Sign 276 feet west of Mattis Avenue. R-7-302 No Parking Symbol Arrow Sign at 316 feet west of Mattis Avenue. And R-7-302 No Parking Symbol Arrow Sign at 356 feet west of Mattis Avenue.
This time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5B be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second. On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5C for introduction and ordinance amending file of the council number 118, 2017, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate officials of the city of Scranton to take all necessary actions to implement the consolidated submission for community planning and development programs to be funded under the Community Development Block Grant Program, Home Investment Partnership Program, and Emergency Solutions Grants Program for the period beginning January 1, 2018, by amending the 2018 Action Plan to accept the $2,699,526 under the Community Development Block Grant Program, $560,864 under the Home Investment Partnership Program, and $220,906 under the Emergency Solutions Grant Program.
This time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5C be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved. Second.
On the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5D for introduction and resolution approving and authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials for the city of Scranton to enter into a mortgage assumption agreement and mortgage subordination agreement with Christopher Pizano individually concerning a city OECD commercial industrial loan originally obtained by Edmund and Chris Pizano Partnership on July 28, 2006.
This time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5D be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved. Second.
On the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5E for introduction and resolution, appointment of Sireshwari Patel, 817 Ash Street, apartment number 3W, Scranton, Pennsylvania 18510, as a member of the Scranton Planning Commission. Mr. Patel will be replacing Robert Weber, whose term expired December 31, 2015. Mr. Patel will be appointed to a five-year term effective May 24, 2018, and will expire May 24, 2023.
This time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5E be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved. Second.
On the question?
Yes, on the question, Mrs. Reed, would you be able to put a request into the mayor to provide additional justification for Mr. Patel's qualifications? His letter of interest in the background is a little brief. That's all I have.
And just to add to that, I really think moving forward for any appointment to any board or commission in the city that we need more than a letter of interest. We need a resume, at least showing the qualifications of that individual because we are giving our vote of confidence. So not just for this appointment, but moving forward. And I've said this in the past, that I do think that we need more than just a very short letter of interest. Thank you.
I find it interesting that these issues are only coming up on this appointment.
I've actually brought this up in the past. Actually, I believe I brought it up in caucus months ago, that if you look at what other cities do, there's actually an application process and something that they have to fill out. This is nothing against the gentleman here, but, you know, I at least would like to see a resume or something more than a simple letter of interest. And that goes for everybody, not just this gentleman here.
Yes, and I've been, since I got here, I've been asking for more justification for any proposals that the mayor has sent down. So it's just not for this appointment. It's across the board.
And again, Mr. Gawn, you've been on council five years. And again, I don't recall discussing this. But if that's something we want to discuss, we certainly can. But we've approved a number of appointments already this year without that coming up until this specific one.
On the question? Yeah, I will say that a good compromise position could be the application that Mr. Gawn, Councilman Gawn, mentioned because I think that might be a very good idea. It allows for a little more information than a letter and maybe not quite as much as a resume, but something in between. And we could basically devise a letter ourselves, send it down to the administration's review, and it's something that we could ask for all the appointees to fill out.
All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5F for introduction and resolution authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into this operation and maintenance agreement for stormwater management, best management practices by and between Randmar Development Incorporated and the city of Scranton.
This time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5F be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved. Second.
On the question?
Yes, on the question, I think Mr. Dobson asked for an explanation on this. This is a routine piece of legislation between the city of Scranton and Randmar. Randmar Development Incorporated, which is the owner of the land where the sheets, is the new sheets is going. And this basically gives all responsibility for stormwater management to Randmar. So it releases the city of any responsibility. And if you look in the backup of the legislation, it just says that they're going to put a stormwater inlet and different things, a new pipe related to stormwater management on that property. So again, just a routine piece of legislation here that takes the responsibility off of the city onto Randmar. There is a paragraph in here that says if the landowner would grant permission to the city, they can enter the property to take a look at the stormwater conveyance and make sure that it's under best management practices if necessary. And the city would just have to notify the landowner. Thank you.
Anyone else? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5G for introduction and resolution authorizing the mayor of the city of Scranton to sign the applicant's authorization for agent to apply for a highway occupancy permit on behalf of the city for the sheet stormwater connection to the inlet on Seventh Avenue.
I'll entertain, at this time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5G be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved. Second.
On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5H for introduction and resolution authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract with Riley Associates Consulting Engineers to provide engineering services for the city of Scranton 2018 roadway improvement project.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion
At this time, we'll entertain a motion that Item 5H be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved. Second.
On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Sixth order, 6A, reading by title filed with council number 18, 2018, an ordinance creating and establishing special city account number is noted entitled NCSX for the receipt of grant funds from the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency National Crime Statistics Exchange Program.
You've heard reading by title of Item 6A. What is your pleasure?
I move that Item 6A past reading by title. Second.
On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Seventh order, 7A, for consideration by the committee on rules for adoption, resolution number 39, 2018, appointment of David Bolzoni, 2187 Port Royal Road, Clark Summit, Pennsylvania 18411, to the position of business administrator effective May 7, 2018. Mr. Bolzoni will be replacing Rebecca McMullin, who was serving as acting business administrator.
As chairperson for the committee on rules, I recommend final passage of Item 7A.
Second.
On the question?
Yes, on the question, I'm going to be voting against following two resolutions. I do agree with Wayne that, you know, sometimes you have to go out and get talent, but at the same time, we have the rule on the book, and we should follow it.
Anyone else? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Roll call?
No.
Excuse me, it's a roll call vote?
I apologize. Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
No.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gohann?
No.
And Mr. Rogan?
Yes, I hereby declare Item 7A legally and lawfully adopted.
7B for consideration by the committee on rules for adoption, resolution number 40, 2018, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to waive the residency requirements for David Bolzoni, city of Scranton, business administrator.
As chairperson for the committee on rules, I recommend final passage of Item 7B.
Second.
On the question?
Yes, on the question. I'm going to be voting no, as I did last week, because I truly believe that this is a question of fairness. And I did speak to Mr. Bolzoni, as I did four years ago, when I voted against the waiver, and I let him know that I didn't think that this was right. I disagree with Councilman Evans and my other colleagues, who are going to vote for this waiver, for several reasons. But Mr. Evans said that it shouldn't be important where the employee parks his car. I disagree. I think it is important where the employee parks his car. He should park it right in the city of Scranton, like everybody else does. This is about, in my opinion, an investment. We are making an investment. You are making an investment in the business administrator, who makes $90,000 a year and who has gotten a raise over the last four years from where that salary was four years ago. He should have to invest in the city. And this isn't just about Mr. Bolzoni. I think he's qualified. If he were to live in the city, I would give this my 100% approval. So, you could replace Mr. Bolzoni with Al Jones, Bill Smith. It doesn't matter. This is about the principle of the argument. If we're going to invest in a business administrator, then he should invest in the city of Scranton. And it's as simple as that. As I mentioned last week, I don't think it's fair that someone makes $90,000, doesn't live in the city, and avoids property taxes, school property taxes, city property taxes, garbage fee, and everything else. So, it's a question of fairness, and it's a question, most importantly, in my opinion, of investment. And I said this to Mr. Bolzoni, do the right thing, move into the city, and I will support him 100%. Thank you.
Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
No.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gohann?
No.
And Mr. Rogan?
Yes, I hereby declare Item 7B legally and lawfully adopted. There's no further business. We'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Meeting adjourned.